Okay, I will call the meeting to order. We have the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Especially, especially significant on this nine eleven day. Yes.
Patriot Day.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Good?
Here.
Mr. Seaworth? Mr. Seaworth? Any reports of fifteen or more? Ms. Stomack?
Here.
Mr. Sowers?
Here.
Mr. Hupp?
Here.
Ms. Dixon?
Here.
Here.
Okay, we've had the agenda distributed. Are there any additions or anything to delete from the agenda? Okay, we will follow the agenda as distributed. We have the minutes from August the fourteenth.
You know, I've got the really important stuff. They misspelled John Shaver's last name throughout the whole minutes.
Oh.
Thank you.
That was Tracy's fault.
That was correct. That's why I look.
You gotta, you gotta write the first time.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it's right in different times, too. It's like...
Oh, yeah, I see.
Details, details.
So it's S A J F F E R?
Yes.
Any other corrections or additions to the minutes? Okay, motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, we don't have anybody here, so no one signed up for the general citizen comments? We also do not have any public hearings this evening?
Mr. Chair, I did check. The voicemail number is not going to be left in concern or emails.
Very good. All right, again, we don't have anybody signed up to speak, and we don't have any public hearings to, to conduct this evening. Now, we do have some items for discussion. The first being the proposed amendment for village residential zoning. This has been discussed for a couple meetings, I think, both at the council and at the planning commission. We're requested this evening to consider the concept generally. And if we would deem it to be suitable for use in the ray, to evaluate options for integrating the use into the zoning ordinance. Consideration of which zoning districts this new element would be a good addition to, as well as the preferred integral components to be included in the draft ordinance are requested. Development of a small planning commission work group may be considered. So we have quite a bit of information on village residential zoning properties. Suggestion would be that this could be considered by a special use permit in R three and R four. And in talking to Brian yesterday, he said that some of the things that we should consider is, would this be considered by a special use permit? Also, to consider whether it should be one parcel, one area of land, that's owned and managed by the same owner. Or should it be individually deeded in individual parcels? And also would be the square footage of the dwellings that would be proposed here. I think in the information that we have, it considers square footage as low as three hundred. That may be too small. I'm just putting that out there. Five hundred or eight hundred, which I think is what we have now, could be considered. And also, it would be no short-term rentals. These would be single-family homes. No matter, no matter what size it might be. Okay, is there a general discussion on the village residential?
It's such an interesting idea. I think it's really, should be probably included in, in our zoning ordinance.
And, and to me, it reminds me of the, the village apartments, they're duplexes. But the ones that are currently there, I think off of eighth and ninth, I believe that's right, eighth and ninth streets. I remember when those were, were considered and then built, they developed a street between the two existing streets. And it seems like they have done well. And again, they're duplexes where these would be single-family homes. But it seems like, to me, that's the same type of concept.
Well, even maybe expanded upon, because it's almost like their own little community there. So I think it's that, and then some, you know, because it's... And I think it just makes it, I agree with Bill. I think, I think it's very interesting, and I think they're, they're adorable. I think it's a cute little community.
Dude, I kind of prefer it being managed by one person, one entity, than having all these individual homeowners throughout the thing. I think that could cause some issues, but I'm...
I think that's mentioned in here, yes.
I'm agreeing with both Bill and, and Tracy. And I think as well, it'd be much better to start off with the one person owning everything, possibly later on, might be something to consider. I think maybe staff could make some recommendations about the size that may assist us in that regard.
Three hundred seems way too small.
I think, I think Brian threw out the five hundred square feet.
Because what are typical tiny houses with the square footage? Good question. Five hundred? I mean, I don't know what...
Well, some of them are three.
Tiny, tiny.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, less, less than three hundred, maybe.
Maybe they go like the three to eight, something, I think is the range. I, I agree with everybody that has commented so far. I like the idea. I think we could definitely implement something like this here. Would help, I think, increase our stock of housing. And because they're smaller units, would be more affordable, in theory, for more people. And I, I've been thinking about the pros and cons of having one owner versus everybody owning their own. And I'm, I can sort of argue it either way, because there are a lot of advantages to having one owner, because then, you know, you've got one person that is in charge of all of the, the properties and making sure it's, you know, the same. Everybody keeps it up the same, et cetera. The only drawback to that is that, is that you're saying that they're, they can only be rentals. They can only be long-term rentals. People will never own them. And that's the way people will build wealth, is to own property, is to own real estate. And if we restrict this to just one owner and make it so that they're only rentals, then I think we should explore other options that would maybe create something similar that would be available for people to be able to buy and own and build wealth. You know, somebody just out of college with their first job, regardless of if they're single or, or have somebody living with them, these would be perfect for them. And if they have a professional job, for example, they're a teacher, there, there would be no reason why they couldn't own something this size. It would be perfect, you know, a young couple starting out. Somebody that's recently retired, that is not married anymore, for whatever reason. Or somebody that wants to live closer to their grandchildren. I mean, I can think of all, all kinds of examples. But I, I just, I don't know if I, if I am totally sold on the one person owning it all so that nobody could own them.
Well, so, I, I did not, yeah, everything I've read, I've just read on the paper. So there's click here for the videos, for other resources and stuff. I didn't click on any of that. But does it say, in the communities that have these, does it say whether they're rental or one owner?
It's a mixture.
Yeah, I think it's...
It's a mixture.
It's a great idea.
Some are, some are owned.
Like that. And I think that's a, it's a good idea. I mean, you might be able to have other restrictions to have everyone maintain their property in a certain, in a certain way.
You could require an HOA.
Require an HOA or things. There are a lot of options.
Do that in some subdivisions.
Exactly, it makes sense.
And people are required to do certain things and maintain their, you know, exteriors a certain way. I mean, that's something that we could do. I just, the purpose of this, I think, is to give us flexibility in increasing our housing stock and giving more options to people. So I don't know if I want to restrict the flexibility so, so much. I think you can restrict it with, without limiting it to just being rentals.
Yeah, I think the HOA would be the, the way to go on that, if you wanted to, to make sure that it stayed uniform or whatever that might be. But get those options, and the option could be, so you buy it, and then you have a long-term rental there that you're renting out.
And the other thing is, I think, too, I mean, I'm not a real estate mogul, but I don't know how many developers are out there that would be interested in doing something like this in Luray and then keeping it and maintaining it. Like I, you know, we put it in and make it an option and restrict it to having one owner, and this developer that has to keep it. I don't know how many bites we'd get. And then we've created something that looks good on paper, but practicality is not being used. used. And that would be silly, I think. I think it's a great idea. I think, I think it's a lot of information. And I, I don't know if, I mean, I don't know if we can discuss and pare down and really make decisions about recommendations on lot sizes and this and that in, in these meetings. It would, Brian suggested that a work group of this group maybe study this, come back to the full commission with a recommendation. And I, I think that might be something we want to consider. I mean, it's, it's a lot. And Ligon provided a lot of information, a lot of good information. I think we'd get a better product if we studied it, if we really delved in.
And it might be good to, to know, we've got pictures of what this could look like, but it might be good to know where there's some.
Identify some sites, right.
Where has this been implemented? And what can we learn from?
Yeah, so that, you know, it's got additional reading and resources. If you click on here, you've got a video of a tiny home village in North Carolina. And then in Virginia with the new guidelines. I didn't, I, I just haven't looked at it online to see if we had a live link to it or not, but, and then, so there, there's a video of a, of a, a real tiny home village that I think would be cool to see.
No, I think it's a great idea. But I think it's going to take a lot of discussion. It's going to take a lot of experts to speak with and to get advice. I'm not sure that we have right here, right now, the people that we need to speak with about this.
I agree.
But it's certainly a wonderful idea, I think. And as Barbie pointed out, to solve some of the problems that we have, along with a lot of other people.
And another question that would be, one we'd have to consider would be which zoning districts. R4 probably, without a doubt. But there might be some parcels in R3.
I think that's what it, isn't that what this said?
And, and even in R5, which is apartments, but this could be a variation of apartments.
Yeah, so, so Ligon is recommending R3 and R4.
So we all, we all agree with the general concept, that it's a good thing. Probably could be a really good thing.
Yeah, rentals versus ownership and one person versus multi, I think is, almost needs to be established before you can really delve into.
Can you have a mixture of these, these things? Some company didn't want to run it, or some didn't?
Like a property management company.
That's been quite been a discussion, would be having a property management company assigned to, you know, the piece of property and coming up with a minimum and maximum amount of units that could be constructed. And I do know that Brian's going to have broken myself working on a, some sort of a drawing, pick a piece of land that we feel would, would work for this, see how many units by code you could get on it. And, you know, come up with, and, and like Chairman Good said was, you know, he and Brian had just threw the number out, 500 square feet. And as of now, the code says that the maximum for this would be 1,100 square feet, but that's, it shall not exceed 1,100 square feet. But we did talk that 300 square feet, we feel would suit.
So you all are, are working on that and will, in subsequent meetings, we'll have more information, so then.
And I think you all had already talked about the new session, the breakdown.
Well, I think we had, we wait till next time and see what else, what other information they come back with and go from there. Like, like John said, it's not going to be anything decided tonight or in the near future.
And again, I think it, Mike, I think it, I think it would be real helpful if we could find where this concept is actually on the ground. I know it says in here, North Carolina, but maybe there's some place in Virginia that has allowed for this development and we, we can see how it's going.
And we'll check in there.
All right, other discussion on this matter at this time? Okay. We also have two special use applications that will come before us next month. They're, they're here for information. One is for a short-term rental on Caterpillar Drive, I believe it is, 142. And even though the ordinance was changed, as we have in here, the town attorney, town attorney says that since these were in process, then we still have to consider the, this special use permit. And the other one, I believe, is in R3, which was previously, previously a bed and breakfast on Mechanic Street.
Well, it, it has been, it has been a bed and breakfast, but most recently it was a single-family dwelling.
Okay, yes. Okay, and again, that one's in R3, so that's a little bit different consideration, perhaps. Any discussion on these two? Anything else that we need before they're advertised for a public hearing to come before us in October?
I didn't get to watch the town council on Monday. How, how far along are they with what we've recommended and have they adopted that, Mike?
I left that handout.
Oh, gotcha. Oh, I'm sorry.
And they, and they did approve this Monday night. Yes, yeah. Yeah, the, the changes here, an ordinance amending certain provisions of Article 1, 4, and 5, and dealing with lodging houses. These regulations were approved by the council. And I also understand that the, the matters that the commission considered last month, the special use permit on North Lee Street for a lodging house in R3 was approved. The, I meant our special use permit for Luray Avenue was denied by the council. And the placement of a mobile home, or manufactured home, I'm sorry, on Grove Road was approved. So again, any, anything else on these two that will come up in October? Okay. We will be prepared at that time. Okay, the, the final item that we have here for discussion is the major topics that we will look at in the comprehensive plan update. We have a list of potential topics as well as a copy of the current comprehensive plan for review and markup. And as has been mentioned before, or as we've done before too, commission members and staff will be tasked to be present at individual stations when we have a public meeting to provide insight and answer questions prior to the participants writing down their comments. I think the, the two things that Brian asked that we look at tonight are these topics. And whether we want to include any other topics for comment. And then also to start figuring out who wants to be at the, at the point in the public meeting, who wants to be at each station to talk about housing or Parks and Rec or transportation or pedestrian improvements or whichever might be your favorite one.
I don't, I think we'd have to know it premature. Yeah, I, I don't see where, I mean, is there, it said late 2024 is what it says in here, so.
He said possibly mid-November or the first week of December.
In November ain't going to work for me, but. I didn't come up with any new, bold topics. I, I just thought about them, things underneath each one that maybe for discussion later, but I didn't, I thought that.
These are really general.
The general outline is, is pretty good.
Well, I think it's what was in, pretty much the same outline as previously, right?
Yes. He said we could also discuss what we might think about for a name.
Oh, I've thought of that.
For the plan, right now they're using forward thinking, which I think ties into our seal for the, for the town.
I like, I like Horizon. Horizon instead of Forward or Thrive, maybe, or some kind of variation.
It's one of my favorite words. Thrive.
Okay, other discussion here for any other topics that might be included?
Well, I mean, I agree with Bill, like they're really general topics. I don't, I don't know how many communities have comprehensive plans that don't have the same topics. I think the devil is in the details. I'm, I'm wondering though, have you all seen other comprehensive plans in places where one of the topics is devoted to exploring ways that the town can coordinate with other entities, whether it is the county or other agencies, to work on improving or solving issues that maybe aren't totally within the realm of town control, but certainly impacted town? Drug use, homelessness, things that, that impacted town.
Well, public, under public safety and emergency services, it has drug interdiction, community safety and security.
Right, but I, I don't see any goals. I don't see any action plan. I see topics. And I, so the only, the only question I have really for tonight is, at what point do we get sort of like a report card of where we are with the current comprehensive plan, what's been accomplished, what we're still working on, timelines for when things were accomplished? I mean, do we get any kind of, I mean, I'm used to, starting with the baseline. When, when we do comprehensive plans in school divisions, we take our current comprehensive plan, we review it, we apply a report card, see what's been met, what we need to carry forward, and then we work on what we're adding to it, so.
We got the, we got a report as far as like timelines for the, the projects that were in here throughout the last five years. You know, where it talked about Memorial Drive intersection and, you know, we, I remember seeing reports as far as what we had done.
I don't think we've gotten one since I've been on the commission. And that's why, it's been a year and a half.
So, okay, so it's been before that, but I think I've seen those reports.
Yeah, at some point, yes, we do. At some point, we have gotten a, a report from the town staff that.
So I think, I think that would be helpful to have that.
Specifically on projects, though, that was, to Barbie's point, that was on projects, but maybe not anything else that was in the comprehensive plan.
And I do know that Brooke is working on some stuff with the plan.
I, I just think that would be helpful to look at where we are currently with our current comprehensive plan.
Commissioner Swoback, I made a note to.
Okay.
To get you some additional information on that.
Well, it should be for everybody.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I, for example, under Parks and Rec, if we had a goal under Parks and Rec that was XYZ and we wanted it done by 2025, we review the report and we see that we haven't quite met that goal, then that would, you know, get a star on our list to make sure that we, you know, review that goal and maybe change it or edit it somehow and make it, make it a focus for the next one.
Could be like explore just some facilities and it could say, you know, pickleball courts and skate park and different things that we were looking at over the last five years of things that we're, we're seeing that we potentially could do in the future. Doesn't necessarily mean we need to tick off all the boxes, but these are the five things that we are, like to explore in depth that we're seriously looking to explore.
Right, but I mean, in, in the, any comprehensive plan, like under whatever topic, whatever goals you put under there, it would have a timeline. You know, some, everything's not going to get done in the first year of the comprehensive plan. Things are, are phased in.
In the five years, it actually, you know, implementation, it says implemented over the next five, 10, or 20 years.
Exactly.
It's pretty broad.
Exactly.
And it's updated every five years.
Right.
As required.
But I just think it's easier to update it if you know what you've accomplished. I mean, you guys might know what you've accomplished, but I have no clue, because I haven't been here.
And then some things, just to pick out one example, like under recreation, the proposed extension of the greenway to the, the spring, the.
Redwell. Redwell.
Yes, the furnace, Isabella.
Jaeger.
Okay, Jaeger, Jaeger split, there you go, okay.
And that's, that's a good example, because any, anything like that, any capital improvement, whatever goals and timeline objectives go into the comprehensive plan, certainly has an impact on, on the capital improvement plan. Like, and that has a timeline, so that you know how much money you're going to be out putting out and maybe have to borrow or whatever. They, they have to, those two plans need to work together.
And I'll, I'll pull this as an example from the 2019 comp plan for items under the rescue squad, signalization Memorial Drive for better access, that's been completed. Safe and efficient access to the rescue squad, all that was done. Why Memorial Drive with new safety and signs, that's been done. And the advanced beacon computer in Memorial Drive intersection, allow emergency apparatus, I believe, has been done. So what we'll do is I'll give to Brian and Brooke, and we'll come up with a report card, basically, on that.
Yeah, perfect.
I just picked that one as an example, because, you know, I'm fairly new.
Right, but those are the ones you knew about, yeah. Exactly, yeah.
Okay, other discussion on the topics for the comprehensive plan update 2025? Nobody wants to jump up right now and say, I want transportation.
Yeah, no.
No.
Well, Brian? Brian would be our.
I've been in transportation.
And Brian Christman would be our, one of our transportation guys, too, wouldn't he?
With VDOT?
Yeah, to be at that, at that board.
Well, and tourism, we got two there.
We might, we might have some.
Yeah, we can handle that one.
We might have some input into tourism.
There's no we.
There's a we.
Chairman Good, you can handle education.
Yeah.
And Barbie.
I can try, oh yes, oh yes.
So, there's no place for me, so.
You can go home.
I'll stay home at night.
I'll step aside on education, because Barbie was a lot more current. I'll step aside on education because Barbie was a lot more current, a lot more current.
Well, there's 10 topics listed if we don't add any.
Yeah.
There aren't 10 of us, so we're going to have to take more than one, guys.
I can't remember what board I stood at last time.
I can either.
No, but Barbie, there's, there's Michael and there's Brian Christman.
Yeah, Brooke.
That's nine.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I think I was in transportation last time.
Oh, well, sure, sure. Yeah. Okay, anything else on the proposed or discussion topics for 2025? Okay, we've got a lot to do ahead of us.
Is all of that work done in our regular meetings?
Mostly, yes.
Is it?
Um, I think, I think the last time, at one point, we kind of went through page by page or section by section.
Yeah.
We took like 20 pages or 10 pages a week on a meeting.
And most of it moved pretty quickly, too, I think.
Well, the last two comprehensive plans were very different.
Definitely, very different.
Extraordinarily different. Like, two, two comp plans ago, the comp plan before this was more like a book, and it was like 150 pages, and it was tons of words and.
History.
That said nothing.
It wasn't a plan, it was just history of the town.
It was interesting, but, you know, this is very bullet point, whereas that was more a book. So I don't know, so this, so I think they really made this concise, like, to your point, Barbie, is maybe it's almost too concise in that we're just listing a few things but not listing, see.
Well, I mean, I, because that's my first one. I mean, if I look through here and I see, um, I'll pick fire department. Fire programs grant, continue.
Yeah, what's that mean?
Grant for what?
Yeah.
How much money is it? What's the timeline? Hydrant testing. Why? Who does that? How is it done? When is it done? How much does it cost? Like, I just, it's, there's no, I just think, I think it would be helpful for us and for staff. I mean, if the purpose of doing a comprehensive plan is to give you a map of where your town is going, I think the more, the more you drill down to specific goals and objectives and timelines, the more helpful it is. There's no point in doing one if it doesn't mean anything.
No, and I think Brian, the other Brian, it will be very helpful, because, to your point, though, if you look under vehicular and you look on the public transit, we have even expected time period and cost for the additional electric charging stations in the West Main Bridge.
Right, because those are in the, and those are in the capital improvement plan, so that, that's why that cost is in there. But there are other costs. Marketing, promote Four Seasons of Adventure, that's got a cost. And how are you doing that? And who are you working with? And how is, who's in charge of it? You understand what I'm saying?
But there's, I wonder if there's a reason why there's not more, and then, again, Brian may be able to speak to that.
Well, it's got to be general in some way so that it can be amended as you move through the process.
Well, it's just like, it's just like a budget. I mean, it's not written in blood, and there, it's a dynamic document, it changes.
Well, but I think you can't necessarily put a cost to everything, too, because, you know, some of it is, okay, once they find, when they get a budget, because it could be five years down and that budget could be totally different.
Absolutely. You change, you change numbers every year, sometimes you change them four or five times a year.
And so that determines whether you're doing, when and whether you're doing that, that item, particular item.
Right, who's in charge of it? Is LDI going to be marketing that? Is the town going to be marketing that? Are we working with the county on marketing that? Like, there, there, it just, there's no, how do, how do we know? And how do we know if it's been accomplished? If we don't know what it's supposed to be and who's supposed to be doing it, how do we know if it's been done? And to, and how successful it's been done? I'll, I'll bring you, I'll bring you one, an example of what we did, what, a school division, and I'll show you what I'm talking about. I don't articulate it very well, but there's a, there's a market difference.
I think we all get what you're saying, but I just feel like there's got to be a reason why this one is done the way that is.
There is a reason why it's done.
Obviously, a school system is different than a town.
I know, but in our classes last summer that Frankie and I went to, the ones that we looked at from towns are not like this either. So I don't, I don't know, I don't know why it was done like this. I just think we could improve on it, that's all.
Always be better.
And some things, like on the Four Seasons thing that you just read, that may not be something that the town is so actively involved in.
Right.
It may be LDI.
Right, it could be somebody, exactly. And it should say that.
Yeah, but, I mean.
We might know what this means, but to a citizen that is picking it up online or coming in for a paper copy, that, this is not going to help them know what we're doing. I mean, I know, I have a business on Main Street. I know, I know a lot of it. I watch the town meetings. I know enough to be dangerous, but I'd, it should be.
Some more specificity.
It should be, somebody should be able to pick this up and know exactly what we plan to do. Whether we accomplish it or not is a different matter, but we should be able to show people what we're planning.
I'm not sure it's always planning. I think it's a desire at some point to get to that level.
That's true.
So we just cannot put too much detail into this. It is a plan for the future. It's not meant to be a certainty that something's going to happen in so many years.
I, I agree with that, but if you don't have an action plan, how do you ever accomplish a goal? You want to be a teacher. Okay, what are, you don't just pop up one morning and poof, you're a teacher. There are things you have to do. You have to take certain courses in high school so that you can get into a college, and when you get into a college, you have to take certain, like, there's, there is a timeline, there is a plan, there are objectives, there are goals. You meet this one, then you can move to the, I mean, you just don't, I want to be a teacher, okay. I just think it needs to be more specific so that we know if we've met it or not. And if not, do we want to still have that as a goal? Or do we want to, has something happened, or circumstances changed so that that's not important anymore? Do we want to ax that, move in a different direction?
Well, and that's what we'll do when, when they get us that report on what, that part of it, anyway, and then decide how, how specific we want to be for each one of those.
I'm almost confident we'll have the information that you all would need to help bring some light to it.
Okay, other, other discussion at this time? Is there anything else that we need to bring up for this meeting? I think we've gone through the items then in the agenda. Anything else to bring us up to date on?
No, I don't have anything. I do have the, I'll make a note of actual items that I need to do. I need to make some corrections for Mr. Shaper's name, and I will give a Brian and Brooke as soon as they return and start working on this report card for the comp plan from 2019, get it called up and give y'all some solid information.
That would be awesome, thank you.
Anything else you all need for me?
Well.
Chair, I have nothing further.
Okay, well, and we know that you'll come back with some more information on the village development.
Yes, village development. Yeah, I've got it on here, but I'll try to find the concept that we can look at either commercially or, or take a field trip and look at something.
Field trip.
Three to five hundred square feet, or five to eight hundred square feet.
Right, right. Okay, other discussion? All right, we know their next meeting is on Thursday in October, Thursday, October 17. Mr. Chairman, I know that I'll be absent for that meeting. I don't remember that we've met on a Thursday before, but.
No, they bumped the.
I guess, I guess it'll be the same procedure.
So they bumped the town, the council meeting, too, to the.
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Council meeting, the Virgin Municipal League Meeting Conference.
Okay.
Columbus Day on Monday.
That's going to mess me up. Busy, busy, busy. Okay, if there's nothing else, then we should be adjourned as we've completed the agenda as we approved.